Well, to try to get that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January twenty third. Like the call to meeting to order, you would please stand on the prayer for elected leadership invocation. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders. To bring about a kinder, more peaceful world, leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people, listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures. Welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comments. Seeing none. Approval of the minutes. The minutes looked good to me, other than there was a time discrepancy on the final public comment. Where the finance director had eleven either twenty-six or forty-five. That's the only thing that I saw that needs adjusted. But I would make a motion to approve with that correction.
My second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rivas?
Um, what they have got is, well, first of all, Road and Bridge guys have just, and gals have done great. I understand from our Road and Bridge superintendent, they've put in incredible hours and in the also some problems, some equipment breakdowns and repairs. So, so hats off to them for doing a great job. I'd extend it to even city and everybody, the rest done a great job. The other thing I would add, I've got a J-Cab meeting coming up. Monday, so that'll be, it'll be very interesting. So next Tuesday, I should have an update on that.
And I had a NEKES meeting last Thursday, and I have a KES meeting, which was postponed. But it will be coming up this Thursday. So, some things I've been working on.
Awesome. So I have my first project concern meeting, and I really enjoyed it. Great, great board. I'm looking forward to learning more in depth about the organization. And so it was really good. I'm excited to join that group.
They do a great good job, and I'm gonna miss being on that. That's a really good group.
Yeah, it was really good. Just in one meeting, I learned a ton. So it was really, I'm looking forward to it. The only other thing is we did receive a citizen anonymous feedback form to the commissioners asking why the USC four oh nine bond issue was not on the Atchison County webpage. It's kind of interesting perceptions and perspective when you read something like that, you're you know, but after dialogue this morning, we realized since it's coming from the courthouse and a special ballot. So we, I had asked the clerk to come down and join us, but we'll visit with the clerk on that. And if she wants to put something out to the public to let him know, you know, what to expect and all the things, since it came from her office, I see that. So thank you for your feedback. Um, all right, new business Memorial Hall trustee. Consideration of any letters of interest. One letter? Okay.
So far.
Okay. Oh.
I mean, I don't know if we're gonna have anymore. I, I don't know.
We extended the
I believe it was extended until Phil, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
That's why you know that today I can make sure.
So I just put the one that we had, so then that way you could.
Okay, so we were extending until Phil, but we still had a date that we were going to appoint, correct?
I think it was just.
I thought it was today, but I could look back. Okay, I was just making sure. Okay. So I do have a letter in the folder. I would like to read it. It's from Charles Pickman. Atchison County leaders, it has come to my attention that the county is seeking a trustee for Memorial Hall in Atchison. As a veteran of the United States Army, I would be interested in filling this position. Here are some quick highlights of my qualifications. Served in the United States Army from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-two, a veteran of Desert Shield Desert Storm from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-two. Current Vice Commander of the American Legion Fleming Jackson Seaver Post Number Six. Former Commander of the American Legion Fleming Jackson Seaver Post Number Six. Bachelor's Degree in Food Science from the Kansas State University, Master of Science Degree, Kansas State University, and Textured Protein Operations Manager at MGP Ingredients. Thanks in advance for your consideration. Kind regards, Charles J. Pickman. Okay, from the motion to approve Mr. Pickman to the Memorial Hall trustees.
I've moved it now to take Pickman to that position.
Okay.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, next is the Atchison Senior Village Colas. I put this on here. I had a staff member reach out inquiring why they they had heard rumor that they were not going to get their twenty twenty-four cola. I did not recollect that conversation ever. And so when, after learning more about it from HR and from the administrator, the Colas at Senior Village are handled differently than than the rest of the county. So historically, how they've been handled is they are implemented at their annual review time by the administrator. So it's not like for the rest of the county, when the certain payroll date hits, everything's implemented by HR on their payroll. This is different. So I just wanted to bring it before you guys because I feel that the Colas for Senior Village should still be implemented based on how we've done it historically. So just wanted to kind of explain that because I had misunderstood the process at how they differed from the rest of the county. So.
And when did they usually get theirs? Was it?
At their annual review. So.
Each person?
Yes, sir. It's based on their hire date.
I thought it was like, maybe they done a review all on the month of February.
Yeah, no, it's like their anniversary date is when they do it. So just for clarification, I would make a motion to still implement the twenty twenty-four Atchison Senior Village Colas for our staff based on their anniversary date as it's done, been done historically.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you, guys. Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a PO for a twenty twenty-four three oh nine CR mini excavator. Trade-in allowance, which is an asphalt paver, two thousand fifteen wilder paper, a nineteen ninety-five wheel loader, and a two thousand sixteen asphalt roller to be traded in. And the total amount was two hundred fifty-two thousand, and after the source well, uh, discount of forty-eight thousand and the trade-in of seventy-three thousand two hundred, the loyalty customer discount, twenty-three thousand six hundred, total of one hundred and ten thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Coming out of special machinery to fully equip.
And just, this machine will be used for?
Okay, it will be used to put tubes in workaround bridges. It has a mulch head that we can go down in our bad spots. And we can mulch all the trees that we've been paying a lot of this out, hiring a lot of it out. And it's six to eight to ten thousand dollars at a shot, then we could eliminate a lot of that. Not all of it, but a lot of it.
I appreciate you, and I think that you're listening to what the public has said, and we've realized that we focus on the things we're good at and outsource the others, and asphalt's one of the things that we've had really good luck with outsourcing. Yes, so.
What's the, what's extension on that mulch head?
Oh, how many feet? It's twenty-some feet, I believe. I didn't, I can't really tell you. At least twenty, Eric, Eric got to see it in action.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen it work.
You know, I mean, and it'll, it'll get, we've got a lot of places where brushes getting down on the road to where our boom mower will most of it, but it can't take anything bigger than, you know, something like that. Yeah, right. So now we can get clear up and hopefully get it to where the combines and in school buses and, and everybody can get through these bad spots.
Right, okay.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve purchase order as presented from the Road and Bridge Superintendent to fully equipment coming out of special machinery in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 And then this sales agreement, usually I sign those unless you want to. Okay. Uh, the other thing is we're still working on getting the snow off the edge of the road. Uh, I ask everybody to be patient. We know that we're gonna have a mess with all the rain and everything. But all four blades are, are out today, uh, working on the roads. And we start with what we feel are the worst roads first, the ones that are drifted the worst, but hopefully by the end of the week, we can be around most of the road, that it doesn't get too muddy by then. And any questions?
No, I was amazed at two eighty-six, how quickly that had drifted back into that northbound lane.
Yeah, it's just a lot of it, a lot of the bad roads, you know. We'd get through them, and by the time we got through them, then they were drifting again. And so we just kept going through the county and, and some people unfortunately felt like we were a little slow getting there, but we did the best we could, and we still are. The guys have worked a lot of hours. And no one's complaining. They're still coming in and doing it. And I'm really happy with the effort I've got out of my crew.
Yeah, I've been very pleased with the results that I've seen and, yeah. And it was still blowing yesterday. It was above freezing, and it was blowing from the south in the new spots, and crazy.
Sunday evening, you know, we, we all got to come back in because it was blowing from the south, you know, and got to work again. It wasn't that we wanted to, but it needed to be done, so. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so Corey had sent us, Corey Scott, Emergency Medical Services Director, had sent us the twenty twenty-three yearly EMS report. Guys, take a look at that. Have any comments?
Something to do a great job. And track it. I asked Corey a while back, benchmarks like from other counties or EMS services and and I think he worked pretty hard trying to find some good comparisons, and I think Corey may be setting the standard even as far as reporting information, because he couldn't find anybody else reporting as much information, so.
Gotcha. That's what I asked him for a three-year history, because I didn't see the annual report historically. But when he sent those to me, it's interesting to see the trends of increase of calls. So from twenty twenty to today, to twenty twenty-three, there's been four hundred and sixty-three more calls. And year-to-date, twenty-three over twenty-two was ninety-seven more calls. So I'd just like to see, I mean, we say it all the time, that we're increasing in calls, but seeing those numbers, like, it really, it's
Could we get that, didn't we?
No, I asked him for it. So he sent us the twenty twenty-three, and then I just emailed him. I was like, I'd love to see like the last three years, just so I could kind of create some.
Would you forward that to?
Yeah.
Both of us.
Yep, you bet. I would love to.
Cause I've never seen that. Yeah, and I know Alan was on the board with me when, when we started all of this, the ambulance service. Yeah. And I really appreciate Corey is very data-driven.
Yeah.
He has been very meticulous in
Which is helpful.
finding, you know, these times and explaining, and of course, it's helpful to him to see the trends of whether certain trends are going awry or, and getting to the bottom of it. Some things are very simple, you know, just do you I know one time the the, it took longer for the calls was going up, but statistically, they were going to more Kansas City calls, you know, and just, you know, why is it? Why is it? So you dig down and find the analysis of it. So I really appreciate his input and all of this.
Yeah, the information's very helpful. So I'd look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three yearly EMS report as presented from our Emergency Medical Director, Corey Scott.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Um, okay, unfinished business. I'm sorry, we ran out of time. If you would like to.
Morning.
Morning.
A few things. The first of which is a purchase order to twenty-four seven fire protection. The jail fire alarm replacement has been completed, and we have an invoice for that. It's for sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars to be paid out of the ARPA funds. We had, or you guys rather, approved this kind of loosely to be paid out of ARPA. So, there's that.
Okay, look for a motion to approve a purchase order out of ARPA for the twenty-four, going to twenty-four seven fire protection in the amount of sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars for the jail fire alarm replacement.
So, yeah, good question. I'll second. So what was this, the same amount as the projected cost was gonna be? Any change orders or?
No, no, that's correct.
I would like to know that. So is this the same amount what was projected? Right, right, came right in?
Yep.
Yeah. That's unusual. Higher or lower? I really thought they'd get into something with this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's spot on.
Especially the length of time it's taken to get there.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
So, wasn't on time, I guess, but it was in budget.
Right, correct.
Was my side. That's, that was the issue, wasn't it?
Yes, just getting, getting the stuff to get it done. Um, thank you. So the next thing is I have a letter from Connie and I. I think I'll just read it. It's dated today, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, along with Connie Ellerman, County Treasurer, would like the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County to alter the countywide sales tax percentage allocation to stay forward until a new allocation is approved. Um, forty-five percent solid waste fund two oh two and fifty-five percent joint communications fund two oh five. This percentage allocation will allow for a more current financial split based upon current budgets. This percentage split occurs each time a transfer is made to each of these funds from the dedicated countywide sales tax fund nine ninety-seven. Last year, we did a letter like this. Altering the percentage allocation to forty-sixty. Now with the budgets for twenty-four for solid waste and joint communications, it's more forty-five, fifty-five.
Okay.
So Connie has signed it. I've signed it, looking for the chairman to sign it, and then we'll have Michelle do her seal and sign it.
This was started as January one?
Yeah.
Okay.
No transfers have been made from nine ninety-seven yet. Or twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make that motion to accept the, or approve the letter, allow the chairman to sign the letter stating the split in the sales tax.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero, and I will give you a last signature. Okay.
Thank you. Um, then the third thing that I would like to talk about is the email correspondence from David Luke at K Camp that went to you guys and myself. Um, it mentions that we need to give a sixty-day notice of withdrawal from the K Camp interlocal agreement based on the bylaws that they have and the resolution that we signed to be a part of that organization. Um, that if we are interested in obtaining bids for a twenty-five year, that they do that anytime September or later in twenty-four. So I don't know what you guys think about that, if we still want to move forward with, like, putting it out there as RFPs. You know, I've been in contact with, with one insurance broker about moving forward with finding insurance that's equivalent to what we have now, getting at least our due diligence of pricing to see if it's comparable with what we have, or Mr. Luke is, would like to attend the next commission meeting if possible to discuss anything with you. So I don't know if you want, if that's something you want to have him come and do, or?
I, I don't know. It seems to me like I'm not getting exactly, maybe drilled down to cause I, I emailed him myself, and he's saying that we can't uh, look for other insurance, and I think what he's saying is they won't give a RFP until fall.
Right.
But we could, we could withdraw and, and actually look, but we wouldn't get a bid from them.
Oh.
I think that's, is that the way you read that?
I don't know. It's
It, it seems almost evasive, because I specifically asked one, I don't know if the other commissioners probably didn't get to see that, but I had
No, I didn't forward it on, but it says in here that we, Atchison County is obligated to pay the twenty-four contribution that was invoiced. So there's still an invoice, the purchase order in the blue folder that has not been approved.
The complete, I mean, and whether we pull out or not.
Correct.
See that?
He says it's too late at this point to withdraw from the program. If you're wanting to look at the commercial market, the best time to do that is in the fall.
Did you validate that, Pat, with the bylaws? That we don't have an option?
Well, yeah, through the interlocal agreement, we ordinarily, we would use Kansas cash basis law to to avoid that with the interlocal agreement, but we're not able to do that. So we are beyond by the terms of that agreement. So we're stuck with them for one year.
For, for the complete year of twenty twenty. Do we approve that payment?
Yeah, you, you three have to approve the payment.
So I would still be, I think it would be in our best interest to, although we're bound and have to do this, to continue those conversations and with these other brokers, or just to say, like, just so you know, we can't, we're not gonna be using you this year, however, we want to know what our options are, so that when we roll into September, we can do an RFP. Yeah.
I visited to my contact about that and shared the conversations that I've had, and he said, that's completely fine. And that gives them extra time to, to button up everything they need to come look at the facilities and make sure they assess everything properly and give a good thorough, here's what it is. Cause I know where he's coming from. He doesn't want to shortchange us on, on coverage or insurance or anything, but he also wants to make sure who is getting the best. If it's the same coverage and, and the only thing that we're looking at is price comparisons, I mean, making sure it's, it's the right, if they're spot on, if K Camp's spot on with the pricing, or can they do something better and for how long and things like that. So that gives them more time, too.
So is there a specific list of everything they need? Cause I'm just wondering if we put something out, like, obviously not an RFP, but just so the other folks around the community know where we're going to be looking at our options, so that we're you know, open to, to anyone willing to look at us, just to help us out, because, I mean.
Yeah, so from what my understanding is, they need, like, the equipment list, the vehicle list, the property list, and then they will want to come in and look at those properties and assess them and see what's it's gonna take to, to cover them.
Well, to me, I don't think, I mean, we could be letting those entities know, but then to say, we're gonna start this process August or whenever that is. And they can be maybe getting requests in or what they're gonna need, or even, and I guess this would be you to get all of those things that maybe just have a packet.
Yeah.
It's like boom, 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 is I think it'd be wise to do this, like April, May.
I know, cause the budget.
I think so, too.
So we at least meet the budget boards.
I think, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, either way we go, at least one of the number.
Well, and even, can you put it out that, like, we're shopping our twenty twenty-five? I mean, here's
Absolutely.
Yeah, that way it's open.
Yeah, here's the list of all the stuff, and it was interesting.
Absolutely.
And I think But would you put that out for, it would be, we're gonna do an RFP for twenty twenty-five? Yeah. Yeah, and so it's not, there's no expectations that they're gonna do part of this.
And then, yep, they know what they're getting and
Coverage one more to twenty-five.
And if K Camp wants to get their notes in a row before they have the opportunity.
And I'm, I would simply doing this for the taxpayers. It's all about budget.
Right.
I mean, that's what's and I do understand that K Camp is a pool, and I give that, and if you're part of the pool, you're not, so we're in for this year.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, so would, do you still want Mr. Luke to, to come here and visit with you three?
I mean, if he's requesting that, I'm okay with that.
Is next week applicable, you think? I'll see what his schedule is and, or just, just schedule it and see. I will let you.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order for K Camp Insurance for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the twenty twenty-four contribution amount is three hundred and nine thousand ninety dollars out of the county general to have a motion to approve.
Absolutely. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I have one other thing to bring up, but I don't know how much to bring it up. It was an email that Commissioner Quinn sent to the commissioners, the sheriff and myself.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna bring that up. Thank you for bringing that up. So I sent two invoices from uh, City of Atchison Fire for Joint Communications. I would love to see our finance director be the point person to receive those in. But again, that's, that would be my suggestion. But either way, we need to create a process so that we can communicate it, and they know who and how. Mr. Weiser had reached out to Ken and Wes and didn't get responses, so he reached out to me, and I was like, absolutely. Um, he sent copies of invoices, which I shared with you guys for informational purposes. I, I mean, I don't think there's any problem approving them, but I think one point of contact such as our finance director would be a good person.
I, I agree with that. I don't think we've ever defined exactly, you know, the situation with what are we paying for? We're not paying for, what are the local other departments paying for? So the debate always went back to batteries, but, but like, there were laptops bought for rural fire districts and all that, so I, you know, I don't really care as much what we decided to pay for or not, but in all fairness to Mark, we need to approve a list of, these are the expenses that this money is for.
Well, so that was one of the things I think he might come in good for us, because he's helping through the budget process anyway, and I would like him to kind of reach out to their department heads and say, okay, give us a snapshot of what you think you're gonna need, because we have to budget those numbers
Yeah.
um, to know, you know, and we just kind of, it's, it's the transition phase of how it's gonna look, so.
Well, and if we're, if we're paying for a laptop for somebody, and there were some cases where they really didn't even need a laptop. But they've got to do their budget, too, so you know, as I know, other rural townships, they were like, I already have a computer. I do the stuff off of the power district, you know, so I think it's a matter of
Consistent.
It didn't have to be even consistent amongst them. I mean, if one of them needs that, fine. If they don't, fine. As long as we decide who is entitled to whatever money goes to.
Yeah, no, I agree. But I think consistency and having the conversations will be good, because I don't want to go down the road of well, the commission approved a laptop for them, but not a laptop for them, and it's like, no, we're not, we don't want to get back into that battle of who's worthy of what, I think.
Well, and I think there's also, the other issue that came up when we were doing that joint board is on the batteries, how batteries are charged and recharged, and how they're, how they are conditioned that makes them last longer, and if people are using them right and doing it right, made a big difference. So I think it's a little deeper issue as far as there should be a policy, and it's been used as directed and appropriate, blah, blah, blah. So the sheriff has some good ideas on that, and actually, so did the chief down there, and so did Pat. I mean, all of that, all of that's good input, so it'd be good to get that all together and have it.
I definitely, I definitely agree that batteries should be included in it. We had that conversation one of the last joint communications meetings when the city's attorney was there, and we were talking about it, it's like, what's so good as a radio if you don't have a battery? Like, come on, guys, like, like, it goes together, so.
The hospital has parts, components out there as well.
Yeah, okay. So I would like to make a motion to allow our finance director to be the point person for the City of Atchison and rural fire districts to be able to communicate invoices, budget needs, and all monetary.
Maybe just say all entities.
Yeah, all entities, that's fine.
Communications, yeah, but yes, the others, the hospital's part of it.
Can, can, can we alter that to? Can, can, can we alter that to? Working alongside the sheriff?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you, yeah. I mean, I just.
Be more comfortable with him too.
Yep.
And then sheriff's name as far as all that, so he's he's the contact and all that, so it's pretty good.
It'll just be good to be able to send an email back, like, we talked about it today, Mr. Weiser. Our finance director will be your point person to submit your invoices to and. This CC and the sheriff or or however you got, you need to communicate that. Uh, you and the sheriff can work that out. I just wanna be able to communicate with the city that. Hey, thanks for submitting your invoices, like, we're gonna get them approved and.
Yeah, we'll second that.
I did, I can clean it up a little bit. Yeah, I cleaned it up a little bit, so um. I would like to make a motion to allow the finance director um along. The finance director to be the point contact for invoice. Receipts from the entities for joint communication and the sales tax fund. Um, he will work alongside the sheriff um to.
Review those.
Review and. Approve. Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Yep.
And I believe that's all that I have for you. Thank you.
Um, I have a purchase order from the appraiser. Um, to post velocity. For the twenty twenty-four change of value real estate notices. Um, this is for the print services in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and two cents. Um, in comparison, she gave us, this is a hundred and eighty-seven more parcels. Um, than last year and then also postage has increased from fifty-seven cents um to sixty-three cents.
So move. Second.
They moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, thank you. Um, you, you, you need us for?
Yeah, there was, well, I had requested an executive session for thirty minutes and then like after you had emailed, then she just put us on for ten.
Oh, that's okay, we we have time. I just wanna let you know, um, we did discuss the senior village colas. Um, for twenty twenty-four and we approved to continue those um as it's been historically. So for you to do the annual reviews based on their anniversary date and still implement the colas.
Okay, and then what about the ones that like when we were told to not? Do any raises, cause there were some, like, I did all the ones for like. The housekeeping and I did all of those and those are majority like in the springtime. Um, based upon like when we were hired upon, but like um some of the nursing ones, like when we were told we were over budget and to. You know, like not pursue any raises at this time, then those haven't been caught up.
So I'm just gonna speak on my behalf. I thought we were talking about like sign-on bonuses and like things that aren't. Um, warranted. I don't think like your normal cycle of how you have annual reviews and. Implement things like I, I'm not opposed to any, any of that.
Okay, I, that's. We can catch up on those and then just.
I mean, you guys can speak, that was just where my head's at on on that answer for you. Cause I remembered having the conversation of like the sign-on bonuses and all the things that like, we can't.
Yeah.
And it's not, I mean. But for colas and your annual reviews.
I would agree. Yeah, I I just trying to wrap my head around everything. Seems like there's a lot of moving parts right now.
Okay, so you need non-elected, is that right? Thirty minutes? And who?
Um. The commissioners.
Just the commissioners? This is an HR thing?
Uh, Jody's not here today.
Oh, okay, no.
Yeah, I sent her an email and it said she was out.
Okay, so just three commissioners, Pat and yourself. And Mark. I'm moving the board of county commissioners to recess into executive session. At ten thirty-five AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. Now, the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room uh courthouse basement. And those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, um. Mark Seltner and uh Senior Village.
Amendment.
Second.
Yep, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three. Okay. All right, unfinished business, um. I was looking and Kaylee was asking us about the invocation, how we feel about that. Um. I just wanted to have that conversation. Um, I responded that I thought. That adding the addition of the invocation has been wonderful uh to our weekly meetings and I love it and I think it's important. Um, but just wanted to make sure I wasn't the only, like, I was just sitting here wondering how you two feel about that.
I think it's a, I think it's a good tradition. I think it's pretty commonly done, especially here in the Midwest and. As long as we can kinda keep bouncing around. I did help trail Kaylee a little bit uh with some, most ministers and things from the city and. That they use and then they have the same strike that Tina told me, she battles too.
Really?
Um, but. A, getting the people lined up and B, them not forgetting it. And I know when I was down there, it happened once in a while too.
I wonder if we can make it easier on them, because like with their, like, a lot of them do funerals and like their schedules are packed, right? What if, could they, I don't know, this might be a silly idea, just trying to find a happy medium, but if they couldn't attend, just. Even sending one from them so that it's meaningful and it's from them and we could just read it. I mean, because like the one that we use from Sister um that she had given us. I don't know, just a thought, because I know everybody's trying to maneuver several schedules and they wanna be here and they wanna do it, but sometimes. You know, there's not enough time in the day to.
There's no reason they couldn't appear by Zoom either.
Oh, that's a great idea.
You know, it takes half an hour or more to come down here and do it. It takes ten minutes to do it by Zoom or five.
And maybe we can get more of the rural ones because they don't have to drive clear. That would be a great idea.
I, I myself could do without it, but because of the logistics of getting people here and time. And then all of that, so um whichever way it goes, it's fine with me. This is an option, it's a great idea.
Yeah. You give me enough direction.
No, that's fine. I, it's just been very hectic already. Um, the last part of December. Till now, hence, nothing.
Yeah.
So I just need a clarification, because if it's something. Then, you know, just need to be able to reach out and hope like heck.
Yeah. Do I free reach out and include? We could do a Zoom link if that's more convenient.
And for weather like this too, it's good for them just to pop on instead of feeling like they need to.
And I'm, I'm working on an email, but like I said, it's been hectic. Which we got finally some things done and. Yeah, it'll get hectic again though, you know.
Listen, five elections this year, right?
Four, as far as I know right now, I've got four on the calendar. I do not have. I do not have a fifth one on the calendar, but I have four on the calendar.
Oh, but if walnut does their thing.
That would be five.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as of right now, I have four on the calendar.
Potential five, and that's gonna be busy.
Yeah, the four.
Or is busy enough.
The four oh nine, all male bomb election, February first, presidential preference primary, March nineteenth. The primary, August sixth, and then the general election, November fifth.
Um, I digress, I was curious on the mail ballot. So that goes out now, and then when it comes back in, is that all open and counted on the first? Do they get open ahead of time to like get them ready to count? How does that work?
No, I believe that we'll do that on the first. The deadline is noon on the first as well, because of it being an all-male ballot, it's not like a normal election.
Right.
So it's not like a seven to seven kinda thing. I do know that the deadline is noon. On February first to have all ballots back to us.
So you guys close down with the afternoon and just be focused on that.
What's that mean?
I don't know what that means.
That's what I'm saying, no, that's what I'm saying, it was closing down, I, we, we have to work. I mean, no, we'll have to be doing that and our job.
Okay.
Like, no, there's no closing down.
When election workers come in to help do that process.
We should have some coming in.
Okay, I was just kinda curious about logistically, how you do that, cause.
In the mail ballot plan that was sent to the secretary of state's office for, it included uh work workers.
Okay, and on that mail-in ballot, is that a Monday or is that a Tuesday when that the due date is? It's Thursday, okay. Because.
Yeah, it's a Thursday. Sorry.
Other, I'm sorry, I I didn't follow that. So we won't have any issue with a commission meeting, that's what I was getting at.
No.
Yeah, I never, never dealt with a mail-in ballot before, so.
Neither have I, and you almost eight years I've been here, never, never.
In my more than eight years of voting, I've never dealt with mail-in ballot ever, so.
Didn't the city have a mail-in ballot on their sales tax issue just last year?
No, in twenty twenty-two, they did a special election July fourteenth, I believe.
Okay, that was, that was the day of, I mean, I was thinking. It was in person, okay. I remember they had one, but I was thinking.
But because it was only, the city, it was only consolidated to our city locations that would be, so our in-town versus our county.
Yeah, I was just.
Yeah.
Okay, I have some dates to throw at you guys. Um, kneecap, just Stephanie Gardner just sent us an open house they're having, so. Thursday. February eighth. From three thirty to six thirty.
Should we read times again?
Uh, three thirty PM to six thirty PM. It's at the kneecap head start and early head start um. Atchison County, which is seven fifty-one South Eighth Street. And you can come and go, visit with staff, tour the center, so. That, um, another date that I wanted to visit with you guys about was. Um, we had awarded small businesses in Atchison County CDBG grants. And the CDBG is coming, going on a road show. They're gonna be in Atchison um on Tuesday, February twentieth. From nine thirty to twelve thirty. So I know that's during our meeting time, but I really think it would be. Awesome if we could maybe do our meeting that afternoon and could go to that.
What's the time?
Um, it's nine thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. Tuesday, February twentieth. It's at seven sixteen Commercial Street. And um. I don't know, I think. That was so awesome to award small businesses in Atchison, like. Help, so just wanted to ask you guys your thoughts on that.
Does it say on that if there's a presentation, ceremony, comments, remarks, whatever?
So it says CDG, CDBG has partnered with Mochi and Regional Council to provide an opportunity for you to join your peers and partners. And learn about the new CDBG funding that will, can strengthen your community. So um Andrew Hayman is the contact and he's the Community Development Block Grant. I just thought it's hitting here at home. It'd be nice to hear. You know, and support.
So that particular date was on my list to let you guys know, I will be out of town.
Okay.
State, I'll be gone. I, where I'm gonna be, I can Zoom. In for the meeting, wherever the meeting is, but I would know people would attend that.
Okay. Um, what do you think, Eric?
Are you? In or gonna be out of town extended or just that day?
Actually, several days, um.
I was thinking if like the day before or after, if we could move it, I, I don't like move, moving dates and times. That's.
I know. The twenty-first. I will be here the twenty-first, in the afternoon, and I'll be home by, then my flight's beginning, ten thirty or eleven. So I will, I will be here the next day in the afternoon.
Um. So I don't want to volunteer you without discussion, but. Is that something you would want to attend on behalf of Atchison County? I don't know. I just think it's important, like for someone, like I just thought. It'd be good to.
Well, I think, I think so is is the appropriate answer, because I sent it to all of our appropriations. In case it could help for any reason. I don't know the schematics of of this grant by any means, but. I forwarded on to all of them, plus you three, just because you you never know.
Absolutely. If there's funding opportunities, we know we need funding in Atchison County, like. We just don't wanna miss something, especially when it's in our, in our home, it's here.
It's coming here.
Did, did you mention anything about the foundation in in your letter to your? Okay.
I sent your letter to us.
Did I?
Then would you send it to us?
I will send it to you, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking I saw, I saw one of, uh, something to the appropriations.
Oh, I know what. Uh, NEK, yeah.
NEKES, uh. Martha had a question because he sent a template letter out, which is like, everybody needs to to do this. Well, we already have it by resolution that we give them ten thousand a year for their services.
And I, I didn't.
And so it's like, just, do they need to provide all of this information when it's already established, that's gonna be. Great, that's kind of a question.
Why, like, why, like, why would they be any different? I think it's important for people to know what they do. Probably county benefits from um.
They do come and visit with us, but I mean, in that timeframe, I think is the, what was that?
So you think you still wanna try to go to that that day?
I think it would be great.
If you two wanna go and you can still have a meeting in the afternoon and I can zoom in, that's, I have no problem with that.
Uh, you know, um.
It's usually similar, even on the same day, I think for most people, it's like, we change days.
No, absolutely. Yeah, I think it would be good for us to go.
Would you like me just to read this or forward it?
Will you forward us a copy?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, what do you think, Eric? Would you be willing to go to this?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, and then we can just start our meeting that afternoon.
One thirty or one or something, you guys decided you're.
Well, so if we did one that give a half hour to grab something for lunch on the way up and then we could do, um. So it's ten to one, three hours, so one to. Four or one to three, depending on what the agenda holds.
Perhaps do one to three, keep it limited as a little bit of that day.
One to three. Okay, so Tuesday. February twentieth. We will have our meeting from one PM to three PM with no workshop time for. Departments. And um that morning, Eric and I will attend the CDBG. With the finance director um and anybody else that really wants to come, but seven sixteen Commercial is where they're having that.
Yes, you might want to encourage a couple of your department heads to go to that, that are more likely to apply for grants.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll send, is it okay to send a department head email out and let it know, hey? Okay. Yeah, I think it will be really good, cause you never know what opportunities are there and.
I am also counsel for the Housing Authority and that's, they have their board meeting that day at three thirty. Um, I told them when they put their board meetings on this day that this was a priority, but should I? Tell them to expect I won't be there, or you think we'll be done by three?
Yeah, we'll just set it one to three.
Okay.
Cause Alan will be from Zoom anyway, so it'll give him opportunity. And then you can still make yours.
Kaylee, you got that all right? You'll Zoom me that day?
Can I get to Zoom?
Yeah, make sure I got that Zoom link.
Okay, so there's that. All right, hold on, let me keep going. Um, CDBG. What else? There's something else with dates, hold on. Oh.
And then kneecap, open house, I'll be in Topeka. But I might be able to swing by there for a few minutes, but I got something at the end of the day, it's a really weird day.
Gotcha.
That's just to come and go that way.
Yep, that's what it says, yep.
Well, if I missed it, but we need to make sure that all department heads get that. That change for that day, that we're, we're gonna be meeting in the afternoon.
I'll just forward the CDBG to them and with one email and put you on.
February the eighth is counties.
Which day?
February the eighth, December is. Open house, when you get. Yeah, but they will be in county.
Same day. Same cast, yeah, one, one smooth.
Okay, uh, I need a non-elected personnel, please, um, thirty minutes.
Personnel? Thirty minutes.
Um, Commissioners.
Just Commissioners?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners. Recession Executive Session at eleven twenty-two AM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by. KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one, and that purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session. In thirty minutes in the Commission Room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three Commissioners.
Okay, it's been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Yeah, both those states are bad for me.
So.
Okay, so. Un, uh, sorry, unfinished business, any other unfinished things in our inbox that we need to look at? We keep it all in here until we go through and make sure.
Mark, was there anything else, uh, unless it's a budget topic, we need to, we're out there for you, okay, no?
Oh, auditors. So the auditors are coming on March nineteenth and.
So that's been altered.
Okay.
Um, as of this morning, at ten o'clock.
Okay.
Um, they have a conflict on Wednesday, the twentieth, and the auditors will be here Monday, the eighteenth and Tuesday, the nineteenth. I've asked for them. To alter that schedule. Because you guys aren't here. Um, that week. Or have a meeting that week and they cannot alter that schedule.
Okay.
So they were hoping maybe they could just give you guys a call or visit with you on the phone, or if you wanted to.
Were they meeting individually with us or? Say, we've done that once before, or at least, I don't think either one of you were here, and, um, I, you know, it was kinda interesting.
Yeah, they, they just kinda wanted to say hi, do some intros and just get the feel from each of you, how.
I can be available those days.
Yes, so can I, so I'll just mark it off and you tell me what time and I'll just come up and meet with them.
I'll visit with you to get a schedule.
I'm gonna block those two days off.
You like, you like to come in on Fridays though, don't you?
Thursdays or Fridays work pretty good. After dinner. So what, that's a Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday, yeah.
Well. It would probably Tuesday would work better for me if, if they wanna. I'll try to make myself available, I don't. Kinda depends on whether from. I'm not caving it, so I mean, I should be able to be able to get away.
That's March nineteenth, you may be caving.
Oh, March nineteenth, yeah, yeah, I will be caving, but I should be.
I'll come out and cover for you. I've, I've done that, but it's been like. I've had the shoulder blows before.
Okay, so I filed that and just marked it in my calendar, you'll let us know.
I'm out of brackets pretty badly though.
You're never ready for what they present.
Yeah. I would guess if I was, do all three of us kind of in the same rough timeframe, but, right, I mean, not the other, but yeah, okay. That was kinda penciled on Tuesday, assuming that.
Do we have a date for the tax sale yet?
Okay, um. No, but I do have an update, uh, we have, uh, the court has granted judgment now. So we've incurred yesterday, so we have judgment against the, the parcels that are remaining. I, uh. In order to make sure that everybody. Uh, that I don't have a problem with the, the Treasurer's Office, the Sheriff's Office, uh, the Cork's Office and myself, I sent an email. This morning with, uh. Trying to get a consensus on what the best day to do the sale is. Um, the public, there has to be a published notice of the sale. Uh, and then the, the sale cannot be sooner than thirty days after that publication, so the publications go out on the twenty-sixth. So the publication, it's a thirty-one day month, so the twenty-fifth. Would be the thirtieth day, so the twenty-sixth of February forward, we could do it. Um, the Treasurer's Office, I know, didn't want to do the last day of the month. So it may be March first, or it may be, uh. But any of the last week of February, the twenty-seventh, eighth or ninth. Would, would all work. As far as I know, but I haven't heard back from the Treasurer and Sheriff. So it'll be one.
And we're gonna do it at Memorial Hall again?
We are gonna do it at Memorial Hall. The last sale took about forty-five minutes is all. Um, so I think this one will take less than that. There had been a suggestion of doing it on, uh, later in the day and that maybe makes some sense that if we had it at three o'clock or something, it would still be people time to. Go to the bank after the sale. And give us time to get the. The, get receipts out to everybody and things like that. Um, but that, I guess that part still remains to be. Worked out.
So I definitely think we need to handle or hold it in February, I mean, we've been telling constituents for over a year now, it's gonna be February of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Um, so whatever date is fine, whatever time is fine, as long as it's February, because we've had that question.
That's a good point.
The one thing that we hadn't, we hadn't considered was, uh, we, we were. Locked out of court from October twelfth until. Two weeks ago.
But you're saying it's feasible, I mean, we can, we can make it happen in February.
Yes, yes, I think so, I haven't heard back from the Sheriff. That, you know, that he, whether he's gone or something, but, uh, I haven't heard back from him, but I think so. But we were locked out of the course from October twelfth until. Essentially two weeks ago because of the, the hacking that occurred, yeah, um. So that, that part was, was not foreseen.
Not the last day of the month.
Not the last day of the month, but the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. Mondays, I would think are generally bad too. But, and, and, but I haven't gotten any feedback from. From the. Discussion, media license now.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, where are, well, county councillor updates, um. Any other updates?
Uh, no, that would have been the only, the only thing.
And so is there anything else on our task list for the Senior Village? At this moment? Things are signed, executed.
The agreement's signed, uh, executed by both. Uh, this morning, we had some emails about, uh. Company that's going to be doing the closing, opening up, uh, an escrow and. I hadn't received word whether the. Sixty thousand dollar earnest money had been deposited yet, but they're, they're making arrangements for that. They didn't share the. Wire instructions with the email, those would go. I'm not sure how, but through some other. Means, uh, they did ask about setting up, uh. An HR day at the. Facility, I directed them to, uh. Uh, to Lindsay and Jody to coordinate that. They asked about the IT. Um, coordination, I directed them to Wes for that. And they asked about, uh, HR, and I directed them to Julie for that. And then also Brian, physical plant. Questions for the walkthrough, they wanted to do some walkthroughs. They have, um. They, they indicated in the agreement indicates that they don't want any of our computer hardware. Uh, there are a couple of items that I think are. That we think maybe they would want of. Computer hardware, but I think they'll deal with that when they go through the, the walkthroughs. And none of those are particularly valuable. And I've been in communication with Wes about that and. So I, I don't foresee that becoming a, a problem. Brian also mentioned to me that, um. John, the, the. Worker. Maintenance Department worker who's scheduled there may have some. Personal tools on site, and we did not exclude those from the list, I don't anticipate that being a problem, but. We need to inventory those and probably get them offsite. Me in general. Our employees should be using our tools, other than maybe some hand tools, but. You know, they're using our screwdrivers and cameras and tape measures, that's okay, but generally they should be using our tools. But I think we're in good shape there.
Okay. And have we heard or received the letter back from the city yet for the purchase of the forty acres or?
We have, I have not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still waiting on. The job in.
Well, we, I know, I'm just getting nervous on timelines, cause we said that since the week before Thanksgiving.
They're nervous too, they're getting anxious to down there. Keep it rolling.
Well, cause our timeline is. Our funds are on timeline, so I'm just curious if we should be.
I got the impression that all the terms are fine, it's just getting, it's just their, their deal as far as getting their deal between them finished up.
So should the update come from Amy or Mr. Campbell or?
Well, on Monday morning, Pat and I, well, we'll probably learn more about that. Yeah, so we'll find out, we, we worked it out on Monday morning, we'll, we'll know for Tuesday.
Alright, executive sessions, any need for executive sessions? Okay, approval of expenses, the motion to approve. We had two groups of expenses today. Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. This is three to zero.
Yeah, I saw, I, that's the smaller one.
Oh, that's a question, um, on here, the solid waste fund is negative, um. I thought the transfer was coming. Or how is that?
So. The. I'll do this up. That's easy to understand, so. The regular operating budgets are paid out. So they'll make their expenses like regular bills, um, trash. Bills, all that stuff. Like normal, and in nine ninety-seven funds those budgets. But any. Solid waste project like the, the Scale House and the recycle center, that's funded by eight ninety-seven. So we have not. Getting ready to do that transfer to cover that last payment.
The four hundred thousand of it. Is funded through the budget, right, of the project?
Yes.
Okay.
So that was already done, that's already been moved.
Okay.
So the reason. It's negative and joint communications is negative is because we have not done any transfers from nine ninety-seven.
Okay.
Because it was building up.
Got it.
To be able to cover it.
Okay.
So it's, it's growing, but it's, it's not there yet.
Okay.
So that was. Kind of why we had the. Remember when I had said it, it's gonna take time to, to get that balance to be able to cover it, so that's just.
Okay. So it'll be like, kinda like Senior Village, next week will be better and then, okay.
We get more revenue into nine ninety-seven to cover. The operating budgets that they're spending now, cause that's still occurring. On top of being. Negative too, so.
Okay.
Is there any time when that needs to be? Like a cutoff, okay.
Um, and the only reason that is, is because we have. The cash available to cover it, it's, you know, it, in eight ninety-seven. So between eight ninety-seven and nine ninety-seven, it covers all.
Yeah.
But, um. So that's why we're able to let it go like that, um, in anticipation that nine ninety-seven will become higher as more. Collections from sales taxes. Brought in, and then once that collects, then it offsets all those negatives.
And this should just be because it's the first year in, next year, we should have.
We should not have a problem.
It just be, what, in a couple of months?
I'm probably by the end of March, because we haven't received the collections from January yet.
Okay.
And then February and March will still come, which is probably two hundred thousand dollars each. Which I think in one quarter is a good, good turnaround, to be able to offset. That's what we've been expending out.
Just real quick, our solid waste, everything's a hundred percent done, punch list is done, all the constructions, everything totally wrapped up?
No, I don't think the punch list is complete, we just, we just did the last payment for the construction, um. Last week, so payment for this week, um, but. I don't think that the punch list was complete unless something happened.
Yeah, I went out last week and she gave me a tour of it, and there's just a few minimal things I've left, but.
I meant to go out there, so.
Okay, well. That triggered a thought of mine, and I would like to do, um, an executive session for twenty minutes. Non-elected with the Finance Director, please. And the Commissioners. Um, I don't think so on this one.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed an executive session at twelve oh nine PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel. Is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect. Protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes in the Commissioner and courthouse basement, and those present will be. The three Commissioners and Mark Shetner, Finance.
It's been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye. We are back in. We proved the expenses, yes. And then we. So we have thirty more minutes. You guys have anything else you need to discuss?
Did we discuss just going to county day or do that? It's a little ways off, yeah, but. Certainly kind of a plan there. Last year's organizers no longer with us, so.
Um.
I need to put, honestly, I'm writing all these dates and telling you guys, but I need to start putting them in my calendar too, because it's, there's a lot of dates coming up.
This is probably a pack question. I've got a note here when we've met with Ensign taking over the senior village. Have we? Got a decision yet, or maybe this one is gonna do the HR day? Are they gonna buy our PTO time and things like that and dispense it from Ensign, or is that?
As the agreement, um, currently sits, we are to pay all of that out to every employee on their final paycheck and so that they would. But that is one of the discussion points about with them. About whether they would prefer that we pay that to them so that their people would retain their. Leave, some leave time. So I guess that's still up in the air, but as the, the written agreement provides that we will pay it out on the employee's last paycheck.
Okay, so. When will that be decided and I guess by who, I mean, where does that? You know, come, you know, it's, we're coming up against the timeline here pretty quick, so. I just don't, no, understand when that would be decided and then how that would be modified after the contract's been signed.
Well. Um, it would be modified through an added new contract. There are probably half a dozen things that I have on a discussion list and that's one of them. So.
Do we wanna have that discussion? I mean, we have thirty minutes.
Well, I think it's a discussion, it's.
Between.
Craig Fitch, their, their counsel told me that that was something they needed to discuss internally, because. He said we've, we've not done that in the past, but that he recognized that it was, uh, would be a benefit to the employees and that he, they, that they were open to it. And so they were going to discuss it, so I think we're waiting kind of the balls in their court on that.
Um, so I'm trying to understand how that works, cause I haven't been through it, but. In my mind, is it in the best interest of our staff to just pay it out to them, um, for the fact of. If I'm there and I get it paid out, then it's in my control to put it in my savings. Versus if it rolls over and it doesn't work out for me, how's there a guarantee that I would actually get paid out? Cause it's out of our hands.
Right.
So.
Or discussion.
And that, that's a, a very good point. I, I think the, uh. Our discussion was giving the employees each the choice. Um, and on the administrative side, that would be extra work for them. Um, and I think that's really what they were trying to figure out is how difficult it would be for them to be able to keep track of that. Establish separate accounts, cause they would have to. Keep that money in a trust account, they couldn't. You know, they, they wouldn't wanna. Spend it on something else.
Right.
Cause it would be an obligation that they would have. To employees, to our employees. But what we talked about was giving employees the choice, uh, whether they wanted it paid out in one time. Or whether they wanted to start with a new employer with that on the books. Um, your, your point's well taken about any, any addendum to the agreement, should make clear that. No matter what happens, even if they fire an employee, one of those employees for cause, they would still have to pay out that PTO.
Yeah, I would just hate for a staff member not to understand. And, and, and miss out on it, I guess, I just, I always worry about them of like. Just like when we explain our benefits to people and they still, you know, it's like, it's very important, um, I just want in the best interest of our staff, so.
Sure, and one of the things they had also talked about was having HR day at the facility. Uh, you know, Jody was very open to that, very appreciative with that, wanted to have it sooner than later, and so. Uh. I think that would be a, uh, would answer a lot of questions from our current staff.
I just don't wanna leave something up to Ensign if we should be making the decision, the right one, right, of like. For them.
I just don't wanna miss something that we've discussed, said we were gonna revisit it, and then let it drop and, oh. That's, that's where I'm at, cause. You know, uh, I, I know that it's a big transition for.
Um, can you go through what's on the agenda for next week? Thank you, sorry, I've. It's been like three weeks now, but I was trying to say, I'm like, okay, would it be a good idea at the end of our meetings while we're all still together to like. Talk through with you like what's coming up next week, so we know, and then if there's anything we need to add on to next week, like. That way we can walk away with a week of like, okay, I gotta prepare for, for this or for that. Uh, because I should add, sorry. Ready, so currently for Tuesday, January thirty. We have Joe Snyder with the bid openings for these purchase equipment financing. And the removal of bridge twenty three nine dash M point six. And then we also have, uh, David Luke with K Camp. That is currently where we're sitting. Okay, um, may we add an executive session, please? Non-elected personnel. With the commissioners. HR. Finance and county counselor. You think thirty minutes is enough or? Yeah, let's do thirty minutes. Thirty minutes? Yes, please. Okay, we'll add that in. Um, okay, um, sorry, I turned it with, what else?
And you're gonna reach out to TS Connor about a different date?
Yes, I can do that.
Is that be a possibility even Tuesday?
Okay.
We were not wanting to go too fast. Or wait, wait a little while, it would matter, yeah.
Well, we know.
I'd have to be later anyway, because they already, this time they can only do the two Thursday day, it says, yeah, yeah, probably be later.
I can't add it currently, but I will add it by, to the office. Okay, and, um, can you make a note to, if I don't see Michelle on the way out about where or not, the USD four oh nine, if she wants to put anything out? Um, on social media for her election that she's. I believe that we have something ready for that, like I said, it's been hectic to try and get. This done, completed, so, but yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Mark, would you have more budget workshop discussion? It's next week, too soon.
No, um, I plan to, um, go over with you the. County general budget. So next week's fine for that, if, if you wanna like, um, and we can do the commissioner budget at that time too, if you want to. Um, like talk about. All the things that make up the county general budget, get our, um, what, what you guys think about. Appointed attorneys, I have some discussion for that about our, um, tort liability insurance, wha- what we envision for that. Um, I have some points for health insurance and some different things, so we can, can start there and see how the conversation goes. Um, I have one department that, um, is ready to have budget meetings with you. So maybe we can have a discussion about when to schedule that. If you wanna.
What do you do, uh, like a review with the, but. And it's the same time to track that budget, combo thing.
Well, and kind of remember, um, I don't know, there's been a lot of great conversations about it, so it's okay if you don't, but. I had brought up the ideas. Any pay increases or. For department heads, um, the pay sheet at that time when you went through their budget, so that if you were planning to do an increase for that employee. Or for that department head, we could already build it in the budget instead of giving it after the budget's already been done and.
Right, makes sense.
Forgot we. About the timeline with burning too. I forgot about that, so.
Yeah, we didn't talk about funding either, funding solutions.
Yeah, he was actually on that. Email. Yeah, okay, so. Um, can we put on the agenda, sorry, Brian, uh, maintenance director? For update on projects. And. Timelines and costs updates.
What is it, it's next month we'll find out about that grant?
Yeah, February third. We're excited.
Um, probably, how long you think we need for that, thirty minutes?
It's gonna be on Saturday when that comes out?
Yeah. They have their meetings on Saturday.
I'm sure, so probably thirty.
Thirty.
It's on, I'm planning to attend being Zoom. They're offering a Zoom session, so I'm gonna do that. At nine thirty, so.
Nine thirty?
Maybe it is ten thirty.
Well, at eleven thirty and then I, um, so we could almost. We have added to our job next week.
It is on their agenda to, to. Welcome, um, the, the winners and everything, so I'm, I'm hoping we get a, are successful and get a shout out. Maybe, I hope.
So when it gets close, why don't you send an email out to the Zoom?
I will do that.
And then if we have time, we can.
It's nine thirty.
Jump on.
Um.
Probably right, I, I suppose, just a reminder in time.
It is nine thirty.
Good, thank you.
We'll send you down.
Okay, so that's, um. What else? Oh, that, um, county comment that you sent us about road and bridge. That's something we should put on that, that on our social media, should I ask Jody to do that?
Sure. Is that with KC?
Yeah, you, you shared it with us.
I ran across that and thought that was nice.
I want all these things, hey, it's like I keep them there until we have a chance to touch base on everything.
So we left in, in today as far as action to take, who's gonna take care of what, that's something we tried to do at the end of the meeting, I think they're, who's gonna do this?
No, absolutely, I think that's really good to, to circle back of where we're at on everything.
It's like Memorial Hall trustee, how do we notify them? It's a works into letter.
Usually.
Okay, I'm just asking, so I know.
I know.
Yeah, what is?
I've in the past, I, I know that's true, but.
Just wanna look for his. Yeah, he has his email and his phone all on here, so they should be able to. And then you. Michigan Aravis, you had said next week, three commissioners, three commissioners and HR twenty minutes, please for non-elected personnel.
That'd be a little continuation of today's discussion we had, so does that apply to the one you had set up?
No, my, no, mine was about, um. No. Commissioners and. Senior village. Uh, commissioners and HR. That's all I see that we need right now.
Is there time on that, is it three minutes or two?
You said twenty on.
They get thirty. We get thirty to be better.
And will you have a tax sale date for us in February for next week to share?
Yeah, probably today.
Oh.
I, I mean, I, I'm just waiting for email responses.
Okay, awesome. Cool, will you just send us an email when you know that, that's one of the most common questions, I feel like.
And are we sure of the availability of Memorial Hall?
That's also included.
Didn't hear that, but.
No, it's asked about lately, but a couple of months ago I got through several questions. I, I do have.
No, go ahead.
I do have, uh, we, we could discuss if they are, we can discuss it in a month, but I, probably about a five-minute executive session on a. Real estate matter, Roger, Roger's on, he could walk over.
Yeah, we have time today, might as well.
Yeah.
I think I could have Roger.
I'm going back.
Is it, you know, elected? Oh, good job. We had ten.
I'll move to county commissioner, board of county commissioners, recessive executive session. At twelve forty nine PM for consultation with an attorney from a public body. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and the four come out of the executive session. In ten minutes, in the commission room, the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners and Pat Anderson, county camps. Oh, oh, and Roger.
Say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Uh, aye, passes three to zero.
A foreigner invading your land.
All right, we are back in open session. These are public comments. Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So, seconds.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes, read it.